But it's funny.
I thought he was already on.
Well, he's waiting on, same thing I am. It says, oh, here we go.
Oh, really? About 2020, right before COVID kicked off. We were there for that.
Just a second. Oh, there's Jane, too. Hi, guys. Can you all hear me? Can you all hear me?
Okay.
Okay. Hi. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we're ready to go when you are.
Yep.
Ready? Okay. Good morning. Welcome to the Delaware County Council meeting, March 29, 2022, here in the Delaware County Commissioners' courtroom. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if we would, everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Tony, would you like to lead us?
Be just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Donna, whenever you're ready, could you give us a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Chambers. Ms. Lassiter.
She's online.
Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Jane, can you all hear us?
I can't hear you.
Okay.
I don't, but Ron Spates is the only one I see.
Okay.
Did you get a hear from Jane?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. Denise, was the agenda posted and advertised? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Once again, we can, or you can address questions from the public to the county council.
Aren't you going to do a roll call? On the agenda?
Oh, that's right. I asked you about that.
We need to have motion in a second.
Well, I've got that coming here. It's down in the agenda. Hang on here. Let me, let me make my disclaimer here. Questions from public may be directed to the county council website at countycouncildist@co.dellaware.in.us. You can also address any questions to council members at any time during the month. And we will, we'll have public comment at the end of the meeting. Now, I'll ask for an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from?
Ballard.
Ballard. Any discussion from council members? Roll call, please. Donna.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. All right. I don't think we have any appointments today. I would entertain a motion for the February minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions, corrections, discussion? Roll call, please. Donna.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
A Jane.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay. We've got a presentation this morning from Judge Wolf about a magistrate position. Judge Wolf, if you're ready. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council and all of you who are present. My name is Linda Ray Lou Wolf. I'm Judge of Delaware Circuit Court Number Three, and I come to you today as presiding judge of the Delaware Circuit Courts. The judges have reviewed our operations, and we would like to change our master commissioner position to a magistrate position. And to do that, we start with you. There's a statute that provides for the process. And so the judges are to come to the county council first to ask for your approval. And then we can move on to ask for letters of approval from the county commissioners, prosecutor, the bar association, and to put a packet together for our request to pass on to the Legislative Study Committee. And that committee is made up of representatives from the House, the House of Representatives of Indiana, as well as the Indiana State Senate. And so they review our request. There's a hearing on it. It would be set later on this year. And then if they approved our request, then it would be part of a bill that would establish the new judicial officer magistrate in state law, because the magistrate would be a state employee. Now, as some of you remember, years, several years ago, we changed our juvenile master commissioner to a juvenile magistrate. And as some of you already are aware, the county would still be responsible for part of the magistrate's salary. But in, in effect, it would free up about $42,000 a year in the court budget, as well as health insurance and perf, because as a state employee, he would receive his health insurance, his insurance, his life insurance, and his, his retirement would be in the judicial retirement fund instead of perf. And the state would handle all of that. So Emily has passed out the chart that kind of explains. Emily's much more familiar with the numbers than I am. So I had her pull this together for, for you. So have you already?
Can we explain it?
Yes.
Okay.
Please do.
All right. So we pay half of his salary out of county general, the court budget, and half his salary out of 40, because he's half 40 and half county circuit court. So because he's half 40, we get reimbursed for that. So you'll see the first column is county court, what we pay, you know, with benefits plus salary. The second column is 40 court. The third column is 40 courts reimbursement. So that's what we get back from the state. And that third column is 40 courts total cost after the reimbursement. So the, the last column is how much it costs every year to employ him between everything with, with the reimbursement. I broke it down to how much we have would save if we switched that person to a magistrate there at the bottom where it says saving to court budget, savings to 40, and then savings to county general. The savings to the court budget would be salary. The savings to 40 would be salary. And the savings to county general would be the benefits, because the benefits come out of county general. Now, when we talk about savings, we also have some issues that have come up with jury trials, increases in subscriptions and dues. So we're trying to think ahead by, one reason we wanted to do this was because, A, it does help us. It helps our budget. It helps county general. We are going to see an increase in jury trials because of the backlog that we were trying to catch up on now. So we'd like to keep our portion in there, but transfer it to other things. And then, of course, you'll still keep that savings to county general. That won't be touched. That'll just go back into county general. 40 court won't need it. They're, they go by their budget. The other thing we're seeing an increase in is we've lost a lot of our funding for interpreters. They gave us $97 this year versus 2,000 over the past few years. So we're going to put some extra money in that. So when we say savings, yes, it's a savings, but there's some things in our budget we're going to need to transfer money around in if it was approved.
So in effect, it's freeing up some money, but we're being as upfront with you as we can to just indicate that we're still going to have all these jury fees that we need to pay.
Rather than coming to get extra money.
Right.
If this was to be approved. The other thing is, the reason why we're going through this whole thing is currently the master commissioner signs off all these orders, does all the hearings, and then they have to send it to the sitting judge. And the city judge has to review that and sign off on it as well. The magistrate will have to do that. So the efficiency will be a lot better if we change it from master commissioner to magistrate. Is there anything else?
Yeah. Then the litigants don't have to wait for the presiding judge to sign off on the order before they receive it. So it would be much more efficient to have the magistrate be able to have the authority to make his ruling, his findings of fact, his conclusions of law, and sign the order immediately instead of waiting on the judge to review it and sign it. So it's helpful all the way around. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Can you just, one, one question I've got, I guess, is, is, and I think you've covered some of this, but from switching a mast, from a master commissioner to a magistrate, I think you just covered what that helps you do.
Right. It does.
There, could you go over that one more time for me?
When the, when the master commissioner presides over a hearing, he, at the end of the hearing, he may take it under advisement, and then he goes back to his office, and he prepares findings of fact and conclusions of law. And he writes those out in a proposed, in a finding for the judge to finally review. So he presents the findings and his proposal on how to follow up on the case. And it's a recommendation. That's how it's, it's signed off as, as a recommendation to the presiding judge. And then the presiding judge reviews, that would be any of the elected five judges, would review the order, the proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law, and the recommendation. And then we would sign the order. But sometimes we're in court all day, or maybe we wouldn't be able to review his order until the next day. So in the meantime, the litigants are waiting for their answer. They're waiting for their decision. And, you know, it's, waiting is the worst part, right? So the sooner we can get the orders to the litigants, the better.
So according to this, the, at least, and maybe you'll have to explain this to me a little bit more, but the only cost to the county is the benefits, correct?
The only cost to the county would be salary.
Salary.
So right now, we pay the master commissioner $40,450 between 40 court and, and our, our court budget. So we pay half, 40 pays half. The magistrate salary is $42,394, our portion. The state pays the rest of the salary and benefits. So when we split that in half, that's that $21,197 that we pay. That will come out of the court budget. $21,197 will come out of court budget. And then the other half will come out of 4D. But it'd be $14,117.2 after the 66.6% reimbursement. So your total cost to the county will be $35,314 for both budgets, just salary. That's all we have to pay for once, once, if they approve the magistrate position.
Right. The, he would be a state employee, so all of his benefits would be through the state, and his retirement would be through the state. So that's why the expense to the county would only be that part of his salary.
I have a question.
I have a question. On that salary, you're saying that individual would get roughly around numbers $42,000 a year salary?
No. That, that would be the, the money that would be freed, the funds that would be freed up in regard to the count, the court budget and the county general budget.
Okay. So the total salary would be double that.
The total, the total salary for a magistrate is $42,394. That is part of their salary. They get paid in, that will come out of our budget.
What, the, the amount that actually would come out of the county budget is $35,314.20.
But the total cost of, for that individual would be what, including the state's portion?
Oh, you mean the salary?
Overall.
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I know what the salary is now for the magistrate. It's over $127,000.
We only have to pay 42.
But we'd only have to pay the 42,000. But remember, we get a reimbursement from 4D as well. So that's why ultimately the cost to the county is the $35,314.20.
Have a co-
Judge, I'm looking at it as an economic. I, I don't disagree with your, your description of why the magistrate's important. I, I like that part. But as probably most people know, the legislature changed the rules on sheriff's salary a while back, and we now pay the sheriff 95% of the prosecutor's salary by state statute. Is this going to be consistent in the future for future budgets? Or do you think the state might change the rules?
Well, you are correct. The state, you know, the General Assembly does decide what the salaries are for all state employees. But I, I also know that the Indiana Supreme Court presents a proposed budget to the General Assembly every two years. And that includes the salaries of all the judicial officers, whether they're elected, the appellate judges, the, the elected trial court judges, or the appointed judicial officers, including magistrates. So, but it's difficult to say that, that's the long answer. But the short answer is, I really don't know. I really cannot predict what the General Assembly would do. But once he's, would be a magistrate, he would be part of the Indiana judiciary budget. So he wouldn't be singled out, that's for sure. All magistrates would be treated the same way. All judges would be treated the same way.
But the local percentage could be increased by legislation?
That would be up to the General Assembly.
Thank you.
So when this idea was, was brought up, was this in response to you recognizing in the budget that you were going to have some things that needed to be freed up, and you had to think outside the box?
Yes, absolutely.
To create the money?
Yes. We were trying to find a way to free up some money, because we knew we would have these other expenses for dues, for some travel expense. But most importantly, and, and more significantly, would be the jury fees. Because on average, one jury trial costs $5,000. And so that adds up really quickly.
Are there, is it just the one position?
Yes.
So it's not, there's no other positions? We can do the same thing with?
Right. We already have a juvenile magistrate. She's been a juvenile magistrate for, well, since I've been in the position.
Right.
And we only have the one master commissioner. So we don't have any other positions that we can do this with.
Well, I personally, I, I always applaud when, when department heads and leaders take it upon themselves to get creative, to find solutions within their own budget. I, I appreciate you guys being creative with that. I do have just one slight concern, and maybe you can help alleviate that for me right now. You earlier said that currently, as the master commissioner, he's writing a recommendation to the judge, correct?
That's right.
If he's made magistrate, is that his, his or her final decision, then?
That would be an order. That would be an order of the trial court that could be appealable. It could be appealed, just like any order, any decision that I would make as the sitting judge.
And how is the magistrate created? I guess what I'm trying to get at is our judges, we, we have to answer to the public, just like we do, as far as to the voters.
Well, the magistrate answers to the judges.
Okay.
Because he is appointed by the judges.
But, but not to the voters.
And we're, and we're answerable to the public.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Oh, yeah. Every single day.
We wouldn't have any master commissioners if we did this, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct, Ron.
Thank you.
And I've got one other question. By switching from a master commissioner to a magistrate, are we going to, are we, are you going to affect other departments or, or your department in hiring additional staff or?
Nope.
To be able to serve?
No additional staff.
No. The staff we have right now is already what we'd be using.
Not in the prosecutor's office or the clerk's office or anywhere else?
Nope.
Okay.
And I did have one final question, if I could. If, if we went ahead and, I heard you say there are several steps and layers to this process.
There is.
Let's assume that you walk out of here today with what you were seeking, but, but it doesn't go your way down the line. Then what happens?
Then we stay with the master commissioner position.
We don't have to do anything else?
Right. That's correct.
But we're, we're going to have to really watch our budget and try to come up with other ways to, to cover the cost for the jury trials, because that's going to be the biggest increase this year is the jury trials.
Do you have a backup plan for that? Because obviously, you know, you're low on funds.
I'm, yeah. I'm going to have to look at other things, yeah.
Yeah. We're going to have to look at the budget very carefully.
Yeah.
May I say something here?
Go ahead.
I, I think what the judges have done is commendable. Personally, I think it will work. It's, it's just interesting, because I've been around long enough to remember when we entered with master commissioners to help out load. This seems like a pretty reasonable way to, to change what's, what's happening. Now, the prosecutor might complain down the road, though the case looks to them a little higher, because they've got more courts to match, but.
Well, there, there is no additional court. We, right.
Hopefully, that they could be completed by budget time of this year. Otherwise, it would be another year before you could even put this in effect.
Well, the reality is, it will take a while, because the Legislative Study Committee doesn't meet until later on this year.
Correct. It's not immediate.
It won't solve your problem immediately.
Right. It, it's not an, right. That's true. It's not an immediate way to solve the problem. But it is a way to solve a long-term problem. And that is, we will continue to have a lot of jury trials, because we're just trying to make up, you know, we're trying to catch up from the backlog from the pandemic. But as we go along here now, we're still getting new cases. So those cases will need to have jury trials, too, in the next year or two. So, I mean, it, we just have to keep planning ahead.
Your Honor, does the magistrate have the ability to hear criminal cases as well?
Yes.
So that'll help speed up your criminal docket?
It very well could, yes. He could step in and help us if we did need that, absolutely. He would have the general jurisdiction of, of any of us, any of the judges, to handle criminal cases and civil cases. And right now, he handles the four, all the 4D cases, plus quite a few, some of our civil cases, such as some small claims cases, protective order cases, dissolution of marriage cases. And he helps me with the mental health commitment hearings. So he's, he's busy.
So currently, with the record, he, he obviously writes a recommendation.
Right.
Could you speak, is that pretty solid, what, what he recommends? Is that what the judges generally go with? Is there very many times where they went against it?
Yes, yes. Right. And we, we review every recommendation. And if a, a question does come up, we talk with him about it. But I've reviewed his recommendations for years, and I've only had, and that's hundreds of recommendations. And I've only seen one where I, I talked with him about it. You know, there was just more of a, maybe a typographical error than anything else. But he has done a very fine job. And so that's why we're comfortable in recommending that he could be a magistrate.
So as of right now, the commissioner, the commissioner is not funded by the state, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's right.
That's all, that top column, all of that comes out of our budgets.
And I, I guess my biggest worry with this is, I mean, we all know what the state does. I mean, eventually, I think this salary's going to go up and continue to go up, as, as it always does, because they, they don't legislate on what we can afford. They legislate on what they think, which is, I've had my issues with the state anyway during COVID. But, you know, I, I understand, and I see what you're trying to do from a standpoint of streamlining things. I, I do. I just, I, I hate giving anything to the state, because it always ends up, honestly, it ends up being a hindrance during budget time for us, quite honestly. And I, Emily, we've talked about that when it comes to state mandated salaries. And it's nothing against you or anybody else in here. But, you know, it really irritates me that the state, how they, I don't know what the formula is or how they do that. But I would venture to say that this is probably going to go up at some point.
Well, I can tell you this. For magistrates, since I've been in six, since 16, it's, this portion that we pay has never gone up. And they're not, they cannot get the raises that we get. So the $1,000 raises, they, they're not eligible.
Right.
They were eligible for the bonus, but that, that was it. And the raises that they get are at the state level, not here. So, and we've had the juvenile magistrate since, I don't know how long.
Oh, mid-teens.
Mid-teens. And it's not, it's not gone up since. And I'm not saying that couldn't happen.
You know, I've talked in a long time, even when I encouraged you to run for office. The state is our parent, if you want to look at it that way. I know you're upset with the state. The county government is dependent on the state legislature. It doesn't work the other way around.
No, I'm, I'm fully.
It takes a long time for someone like us to realize that. But if you read the statute on the duties of the county council, you'll find that we're subordinate to the state of Indiana.
I'm not, I'm not, Ron, I'm not arguing that. I, I think it's ridiculous that the state can legislate a budget for localities. That's my issue. So I, I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying, but, and I understand how it works. It's just, it's irritating to me, because they incur costs to us and really didn't help out during a COVID budget either, when they shut the state down. So it is what it is there. But I understand what you're trying to do.
Okay.
I'm just kind of.
Judge, what is it that you would need, need from us to move forward?
Well, we certainly need your approval. And it should be memorialized in a letter of support signed by all of you. And that, then that would document[1606.24] And that, then that would document that we have your approval to move ahead. And that you're willing, as the county council, to fund the portion of the salary that would need to be covered.
Am I, am I hearing from counsel an, an interest in, in, um, moving forward with this?
Yes, for me.
I'm supportive of it.
Can you make a motion to approve the judge's request?
I'll second it.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is, is if you guys, if, if we have been, um, do a letter, uh, of approval for us for next month, and then approve that letter at next month's meeting, would that satisfy you?
That would be fine. Would, uh, would you like for me to work with someone on that letter of support?
I'll follow up with you, Your Honor.
Okay, that would be great. And then I'd be glad to come back, uh, to next month's meeting and follow up on this.
Okay.
Hey, I'll, I'll change my motion to, uh, support the president's, uh, request.
Did anyone hear my second?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I'll withdraw that.
So does it need a second?
Hang, hang on.
Yeah, because she...
Let's, let's go ahead and, um, Ron, why don't you remo, why don't, if, if you're willing to do that? Withdraw that. I don't know that we need a motion to... I don't think so. It's, it's an agenda item for next month. Yeah, it'll be an agenda item for next month, and, and we'll just go ahead and do the, the letter. Let everybody have a look at it. If we could get that out prior to the meeting, so that if there's any questions from counsel, um, or, or revisions that need to be made before the meeting, we can do that.
Well, thank you very much. I would be glad to work with, um, Mr. Freeman and return to your meeting next month.
All right, thank you.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you then.
I, I would just, to point out, I'm, I'm curious to how many other items in the budget are, can be, that was a pretty unique, um, solution to a budget issue. I wonder how many other positions have solutions like that that are possible.
All right. Ryan, I would say, look, look into it, um, see what you can find for...
I mean, I thought it was really creative.
Because we're gonna need, well, they've, they've, they've done this before. This was, I was around when they approved the, um, the one for, um, YOC out there. And we had kind of the same discussion that we had here on, on how it would affect everything. And it seems to, I haven't heard any complaints about how things are working out there, so. All right, let's move on to transfers, um, Donna.
Tanya's gonna read them.
Be reading today. All right.
Oh, okay.
All right, starting out transfers, public defenders, B 150 negative 25,000, C 150 positive 25,000, G 179 negative 25,000, H I, no, I'm sorry, H 179 positive 25,000, total zero. Move to approve.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. Any questions from counsel? It was just Mary and I at the finance meeting this, this month.
Shelley Harvey, Administrator, Public Defender's Office. We have had two public defenders resign, so this is to move to, uh, salaries to another pay line to be able to hire two new public defenders.
Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Sheriff, 197 overtime, negative 3,000, 310 settlement, positive 3,000, total zero. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any discussion? Nancy, you want to just, this is the, the last I've got listed as the last ARP.
I actually moved this money in December, but it didn't get paid out.
Okay.
So I have to move money again to make it be covered.
Would you repeat that, please?
I had taken and moved the 3,000 back in December, but for whatever reason, this one person did not get paid. So I had to move money a second time now to cover the last person.
What, what's the settlement? I don't know what that is.
This is the bonus settlement stuff, right?
Yeah, this is the bonus, um, that would have been paid out, uh, for this one person in December. But it didn't get paid in December, so it reverted back, and she's gotta, uh, reappropriate. And this is, I've got this listed as the last.
Lord, I hope so.
ARP. Any questions, just, uh, further questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next up is Jail Lowit, A 109 Correctional Officer, negative 28,070 dollars and 76 cents. The next line is actually the letter B, 109, positive 28,070 dollars and 76 cents, total zero. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Minutefund, we have 101 settlement wages, positive 6,000, 171 FICA, positive $460, 172 PERF, positive $675. The next line should read 310 contractual with a negative 7,135 for a total of zero. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any questions from counsel? This is yours too, isn't it, Nancy?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah, it needs to be updated, Ron.
Remind me.
It's the final payout on the two jailers that didn't get paid.
Oh, okay.
Welcome.
Because they came back as county employees, so I had to put them on payroll to pay them out.
Okay. Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Cumulative Bridge, D 106, negative 26,549.98, E 106, positive 26,549.98, total zero. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel?
Are these, this is just an employee switch?
Yes, I had an employee resign, so this is to replace her.
So I have a question real quick before we move further. This is, I know we just did one with the correctional officer, and now you've got another employee. Are these employees that received a payout bonus?
Um, she resigned, I, I don't think so.
Okay, I was just curious. I know we're gonna be getting to that stage. I know there was a, uh, something set up with how long employees would, would be remaining employed after receiving it. So I was just kind of, uh, hoping to pay attention now, many leave after the fact, so...
Depends on what kind of employee you are also.
Right. So that, that was it. Thank you.
Good point.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
We got Highway next. Oh, that's right. She usually stays up there, or has in the past. All right.
Highway Department, MVH, A 133 Truck Driver, negative 34,157.08, B 133, positive 34,157.08, A 121 Equipment Operator, negative 35,987.80, B 121, positive 35,987.80, 120 Equipment Operator, negative 36,71.48, A 120 Equipment Operator, positive 36,71.48, total zero. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
Yep.
Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tanya, we're ready to move on to County General.
Okay. Title 4D Court, we have 176 life insurance for $229. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. This is, um, you know, there is gonna be several, uh, I think, in here, we're coming up, one of the two. This was a life insurance increase that we didn't anticipate at budget time, and we're probably gonna see some of these. I think most are trying to take them out of their budgets.
Right, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. This is the only budget that I have that did not have it anywhere else in their budget, so I have to take out a county general. The other ones you're gonna see later on all, all had it in their budget. So it'll be appropriations, but it's out of their own budgets.
I need to tell you something.
Okay.
Okay, I, um, Julie, our insurance clerk, just told me last week she was doing the bill, and short-term disability doubled. So a lot of budgets are gonna be short.
Okay.
We didn't know it was going up.
So...
I don't know why we're just now finding out it's March.
So where do we get, do we need to go ahead and get those new rates?
I, I will get the new rate.
Okay.
I know they went up.
Well, then you're gonna get more requests.
I, I just know the bill that she got, they...
They doubled?
At least doubled.
And you're gonna all come back with all these again for the short term?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion in a second?
Yep.
Right, okay. Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Oh. Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Purdue Extension has been withdrawn, so we'll move on to Edit. We have other ser, no, I'm sorry, Edit Projects, and that is 400,000...
No.
No, I'm sorry. Or, $4 million, for a total of $4 million. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel?
Yeah, I have a question. What, what exactly is the, the Edit Projects?
There's a long list typically.
Well, there's 21 of them, or 22, so...
Yeah, there's a lot of them. I'm happy to send it to you if you'd like to see it, just broken down in all the different things they do. Fairgrounds, all the small towns, IT, building maintenance, attorney fees, COVID costs, you name it, economic development.
Two main ones are Edit Bonds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you out of this...
Two main ones are Edit Bonds, and out of this 4 million, it's gonna take 3,160 to pay, just pay Edit Bonds this year.
I've got 3,614.
Is that what you...
Yeah, 3,614 of this 4 million is, is, is bonds.
3,614, 97.
I was just asking, I didn't know, and then for the sake of the public watching, just so everybody's on the up and up, uh, understanding of it.
Yeah, sure. This is standard about this time of year, we do this, so...
Good question.
Yep.
Thank you.
They'll do a new plan. The plan, current plan runs out June 30th, so you'll see the new plan. They, they bring it to you after commissioners get it done and approved. The new plan will start July 1st.
Thank you, Donna.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Donna.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next is QM Building, and 212 should read key fobs rather than QM Building again. The amount is $175, total $175. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel?
I didn't hear what she told me to change that to.
To, to key fob.
Key fob, okay.
Yep, that's a key fob.
Key fobs for like the door security, is that what it is?
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Roll call, Donna, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Convention and Tourism, 317 Strategic Plan, $36,000, total $36,000. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. I've got a note from Finance Committee. This is the cost of the search, um, for a new, uh, director.
Yeah, Jared Walls, Secretary of the Travel and Tourism Commission, Muncie Visitors Bureau. It is for, to move from our reserves to our operating to hire Searchwide, to complete a nationwide search for a new executive director.
And just to up, update you, I guess, or the rest, and maybe you can do a better job than I can, but they, you, you guys attempted to, uh, to locate a person and just didn't find anybody that was the right fit?
Yes, we did an internal search first, publicized, got it narrowed down to four candidates, thought we had the ideal candidate, and they resigned to stay in the county that they're in now. So, um, after that failed search, trying to save money, um, we've resorted to this option.
Didn't he also say that they're also trying to find somebody that had ties, has ties to Delaware County? Wouldn't that one of the options with this company?
Yeah, that's the goal, yes. Um, so Searchwide is a nationwide search forum for DMOs and visitors bureaus across country. So they have a very large database, so they will pull first from candidates that have ties to the community, Ball State University, things of that nature.
So when we was doing the...
Jared, this is Jane Lassiter.
Yeah, Jane.
A few months, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, he can.
A, a few months ago, I attended the meeting, uh, where the gals presented, uh, a contract for tourism and, and helping, uh, Muncie County. Is this part of that also, or, or has that idea been scrapped?
What contract was that? Had a lot going on, sorry.
There was a gal presenting, uh, a contract to, uh, promote Delaware County and Muncie.
No, so that, that was a marketing firm.
Is this money just for the search for the director?
That's correct, yeah. So that, um, that contract was for a marketing firm to do social media, paid ads, things of that nature. So with this $36,000, it actually covers everything with the candidate. So it's the interviews, the flying into Muncie if they have to, if it's not driving distance, hotel stays, background checks, drug screenings, everything is included. The nice thing about this company is, is it is guaranteed for one year. So should the person be terminated with just cause within, um, under 356 days, or should, uh, the person resign, this company does have to complete the search again, free of charge with what we've already paid.
Could you state your name again?
Yeah, it's Jared Walls.
I, you want to spell your last name?
Yep, W A L L S.
Thank you.
Mr. Walls?
Yeah.
Good morning. So I'm not sure if you was here for any of our budget meetings, but we were doing the budget. We increased the budget for the Convention and Tourism Commission quite a bit, um, significantly for the salary for, for the director. I think it was, I'm gonna rough estimate it around $30,000 increase. We were told at the time that was because we were gonna increase a nationwide search, um, to, to get a good quality candidate, to basically expand our net, if you will.
Sure.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, now you're saying that the idea is to get someone more local? Because I guess my understanding before was that it was difficult to get someone more local, and that was the reason to increase the, uh, salary? The second thing I want to ask, we also increased the advertising budget, the social media budget, the, the general budget overall, specifically for this very thing that we're talking about now. So are you saying now that you, you guys are asking for an additional $36,000 to do what we, what we already talked about in the budget before?
Yes, so to move from our reserves to our operating is the $36,000 to hire Searchwide. So the increase you're talking about is in salary. So we haven't filled that position, so currently we're saving that money on the executive director's salary. That was the increase in the budget, and actually overall to the salaries. The staff at the Visitors Bureau, since they're not technically, uh, county employees any longer, were not on the increase plans. And so it had been five years since they had received any type of pay increases. So that was the small uptick in our budget that we presented at budget time, was to bring salaries up to where other county employees were.
I think one of the things to keep in mind is that your budget has no ties to county general, right? Their, their own independent...
Correct.
Budget, and your fees come from innkeeper's tax.
Correct, so, um, everything we bring in, um, comes from 100% from innkeeper's tax. And then, um, anything we bring in over the amount of our approved budget by counsel must be removed to our reserves. So we've done very good at that. We stayed in the black through COVID, and actually moved money to our reserves through COVID by laying off staff, um, being fiscally responsible. So now that we've moved forward, um, we tried to do the search ourselves, and we're unsuccessful trying to save this $36,000. We're now looking to move some money back into that operating from the reserves. And it's almost, I don't have it in front of me, but it's, I think we moved 100 in 28,000 to reserves, um, in January at the end of the year. So we brought in 120 above our approved budget.
Yeah, hang...
How has the, uh, loss of the hotel on South Madison Street affected your budget?
Zero.
Zero is what he said?
It wasn't on the inkeeper's tax. It wasn't open and operating. So you can only collect tax from people staying at the hotel, so.
Well, I know that, but it opened a period of time, but it was open for a long time and was part of your budget, so I just wonder.
Yeah, with.
Currently, I mean.
Yeah. So since that closed, we've had the courtyard come online. Yeah, so when, since that closed, we had the courtyard come online, which is 150 keys. So actually increased the tax. And actually, so far, the three months of inkeeper's tax we've received, this is going to be our highest year, year-to-date on inkeeper's tax, if we keep the trend up, which being a hotelier, I can tell you we are.
Well, I want to go back to Mr. Webb's, Ryan's comment about a local, with local ties. What, they're not necessarily looking for somebody that's currently local. They're looking for somebody that has local ties, so they're more likely to stay in this area. So that's what I think the marketing company suggested, is maybe they find somebody that's going to be, have local ties, want to be back here in Muncy, Indiana, or Delaware County, and be more likely to stay because of those locals ties versus some, it doesn't eliminate somebody local from taking the job, but it makes it more likely that that candidate would stay. So they're not focused on just local, they're focused on.
Everybody, yes.
Yeah.
And that's correct. So, and it's the board, you know, that's been appointed by the local government, gets the final say on all candidates. They simply narrow it down to about seven for us, once, background checks, everything like that. And then we interview from there as a board, all the candidates.
So I know you said you guys tried local and you kind of exhausted your options, and now you're going to try this approach. Is that safe to say that the interim director, Mr. Basham, is not going to be a candidate?
That's up to him if he chooses to apply. I believe that he saw other opportunities, but I can't speak for him at all.
Could you speak, you said you guys were unsuccessful in the first attempt to get someone. Did you not able to get Mr. Basham?
I believe that becomes an HR matter.
I was going to say, I don't think I can speak about applicants.
Well, I guess I was just trying to talk to you.
I hate to spend $36,000.
Yeah, we just said we couldn't do it locally, because we didn't, we tried it, we couldn't do it. So now we got to spend $36,000 to expand our net. If we have a guy, then why would we spend $36,000? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. I'm just trying to ask the questions.
Sure, no, I understand. I just, it gets sticky for me being a board member in HR, because disclosing people who applied, they may not want that. So I can't speak for them.
I mean, the inference is that they don't have anybody locally, that's why they're asking for the money, so.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at.
Well, I think the inference is they don't have a candidate who has agreed to take the position, although he can't speak to the specific HR manners, you can infer that there's nobody that's been hired at this point.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I guess one thing, going back to Ron's question about loss of revenue from the hotel on the south side. Do we sell plans for, wasn't there another hotel coming to town, or is that?
There is, yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's still on the ballot.
So there's additional money coming in.
So I actually, my employer is the one developing the new hotel in town, and it is still in the plans and coming on West Bethel in front of the Haven. It's going to be 100 key Home2 Suites by Hilton.
So extra revenue, which is good for your.
Yes, I actually am a Market Director of Sales, so I oversee Richmond and Muncy, Indiana. My same ownership group owns a Home2 in Richmond that just opened December 30th of 2020. So our first full year was 2021, and typical ramp up for a hotel is eight months. We did it in six weeks, fully ramped up. The joy of a Home2 is an extended stay hotel, which Muncy and Delaware County currently doesn't have. So just like Richmond, we will be pulling people from other counties, other people performing work in the area, from other counties to have that extended stay model where they'll have the full fridges, everything of that nature, which is something Muncy Delaware County currently doesn't have. So I can speak to, as a hotelier, family displaced by a fire, we don't have adequate hotels for them to stay in, in that emergency need. So they're stuck with a mini fridge and a microwave.
Hey, Jared, this is Jane. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Jared, it's nice to see you.
It's nice to hear you.
Jared, how is your collection rate on the inkeepers? Are you getting them all, or?
So from my understanding.
If your income's going up.
Yes, from my understanding, we are, but last, well, not last year, slash year's 20, so in 2020, the state statute changed, and we actually cannot see who's paid and who hasn't. Only the auditor can. They can tell us if, A, if there is one property that's behind, or two, but they can't give us the name of it, and then it's up to the auditor to collect. Can tell you from the revenues received. It doesn't appear that anybody is behind or we're not receiving that inkeeper's tax from the hoteliers.
Yeah, that's kind of a, that's kind of a crock. I was a trader when we started collecting locally, and anybody with a history can tell you how much the revenues increased. I would be known to even go to a hotel and pick up the check. And now we can't even know who owes. I bet if they owed the state, I bet if they could find out. Anyway, you guys have done a good job, and I know that you will collect everything you can. I'm just sorry that there's not a better way to collect delinquency from that.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and.
My reflection on your.
I'm going to go ahead and go to a roll call on this. Donna, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Casa.
Okay, Casa Fund, 174 life insurance, $195. Total, $195.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
More of the same?
More of the same. This is out of their own budget, though.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Casa JCAT, 174 life insurance, $265. Total, $265.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. This is the same, Emily? Okay. Any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Family Recovery Court Grant, 174 life, $16. 175 LTD, STD, $100. 176 health insurance, $72. Total, $188.
Move to approve?
Second.
Ron. Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush.
This one is a little bit different. This was the first year that we had to put the Family Recovery Court Coordinator to full-time grant, so I wasn't sure what her rates would be. However, I'll probably have to come back and ask for more short-term disability again. But this is all coming out of the grant.
Questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Adult user fee, 173 health insurance, $12,209. 174 life insurance, $624. Total, $12,833.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
The health insurance is because we had a previous probation officer that did not require health insurance. The person that took that position does require health insurance. So again, this is coming out of probation user fee funds, doesn't come out of County General. And the other is for the life insurance.
Questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Sales disclosure, 300 personal property postcard printing, $600. 392 dues and subscriptions, which is annual, $673, for a total of $1,273.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
I had a question. Why wasn't this in their budget? Did you talk about that in finance?
This is out of the sales disclosure fund, so it's not a budgetary issue.
Did you hear that, Ron?
No, I just.
We don't do this budget at budget time.
It's not in their budget.
It's not an annual budget.
Yeah, this budget's not done at budget time. It's out of their.
Sales disclosure fund.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lass, excuse me, Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballard?
Sorry, that's me.
Okay, statewide 911, 443 PSAP equipment, $100,000. Then we have 197 overtime, $33,000, for a total of $133,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. You want to?
Okay, so this is, we'll talk about the $33,000 first. The $33,000 is, was originally appropriated in December prior to me coming. It never got paid out. It was to pay off 11 employees their $3,000 union settlement out of the grievance. They no longer work here.
Will you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry, Fred Cummings, 911 Director, sorry. So this $33,000 being transferred is to pay those 11 employees the $3,000 that they should have been paid in December when it was transferred, but it was never done. So it's to make them whole. The second appropriation is part one of an appropriation. You'll see the other part next month. This is actually for a new radio console and some electronics and monitor equipment for the upgrade that we're currently doing. Unfortunately, at the time that I did this transfer request, I was still fairly new and didn't have a full handle on everything that we needed to include some new computer equipment and stuff like that. So you'll actually see that in the next month, as far as the appropriations. Both appropriations, as well as the appropriations coming out of next month, come out of the statewide 911 fund for equipment, so.
So Donna, you had mentioned earlier when Ms. Marvin was up there that you thought that was the last one as far as those grievance funds. Is that's the same as far as the 911 folks as well?
Yeah, Nancy took care of her last one. Mine was for the jailers, and this is for 911. The money all got transferred in December, and the previous payroll person never followed through, made the payments. So now he's happened to.
So they're just mopping up, cleaning it up? What was?
This should be it. These three today should be it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think these could have, I guess, been paid out in December.
They would have been.
They would have been.
It was approved. The transfer was approved in December. It just wasn't followed through on their end to pay it out.
So then it reverted back, and now we've got to reappropriate it, yeah. Okay, any other questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Before we make that motion, let me make sure there's no other, Denise, there were no other addendums or anything, right? Okay, all right.
All right, then, in that case, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Okay, department heads and elected officials? I saw Pam. Okay.
I kind of wanted to clear this up, what Donna was talking about, the short-term and long-term, I'm Pam McCammon, Human Resource Director, I'm sorry, on the short-term, long-term disability, because I was not notified that the rates had gone up, and I just called, and the rates did not go up. The only way the rates would have gone up is if each, anyone in that, in an individual department got more insurance, because short-term and long-term is paid by the county. So if someone, and we did have several people sign up for an extra $10,000 life insurance or whatever, well, that's where you're probably getting higher rates, because you've got to pay because they got more insurance, because the rates did not go up. And I thought, I would have hoped that I would have known that.
Julie just told me that the billing that she got in the county's portion doubled.
Well, it's because that many more people got insurance, but the rates did not go up. So I just want to make that clear to you guys, that if the rates would have gone up, I probably would have said something.
Okay, what department?
Thank you.
Well, she told me, she told me on her billing that the billing doubled. Now, you can't add 10 people and make the billing double. I mean, you'd have to add a lot of employees to make that billing double. I'm just telling you what our insurance girls happened to take out, and she told me it all doubled. So.
So I think what Pam may have been saying, if someone had like a $250,000 policy, they increased to like a $500,000 policy.
Right, that's where, exactly, exactly, Jessica, you understand that. So I don't know why, and that's probably why they doubled. And if you would give me their names, I could probably tell you.
Not here.
They did want.
I'm just, I'm just saying that all departments, she's telling me, because I even double-checked with her.
Okay, but I'm just telling you the facts. Rates did not go up, and I'm more than welcome, more than happy to look at what she's paying. So that's, thank you.
Somebody needs to, then, because we're paying out double. That's all I can tell you.
This is on, this.
On short-term disability.
Short-term disability. So Ron, I heard your comment, but I don't think that's anything we've approved today.
When we approved increases for somebody.
Life insurance.
That was life insurance.
Yeah, that was life insurance, separate.
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay. All right, Tony.
Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I just want to give you an update on staffing in the jail. Right now, we're about 10 positions short, so we're creeping back to kind of to where we were last summer. The only silver lining to that is, within the past two months, four of those positions have been hired to police departments locally, so that's good. In my opinion, that's good. When I was getting into law enforcement, I used the jails as a stepping stone, as do many people now. So I like seeing people from the jail. I like seeing people from dispatch to move on to law enforcement and use it as a stepping stone. One of the other openings, an older gentleman who's retired, I believe he's actually on Social Security, but he was making too much money, so he had to move from full-time to part-time. So that's half of the openings right now. But at this point, in the first three months of the year, we've used approximately 50% of our overtime budget, so we're going to be in a crunch again like we were last year. So I'm just, I'm just letting you guys know where we're at. We've offered overtime to the merit deputies who want to go and work in the jail to help alleviate some of that forcing, and, you know, minimum staffings are already at critical low levels now. So we're doing everything we can, but I just wanted to put that on the radar for you guys of where we're at in the jail. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials? Hey, I don't think we have any other business. Public comment, I've got three people signed up. Marcy Bunch is first.
Time at three minutes.
Yeah. What's that? Okay.
Let me get my phone out.
And Tim Nickum, excuse me.
Just a second. Are you yielding your time? Okay, so, all right.
Morning, Mr. Nickum.
Okay.
Morning. Morning, council members. My name's Tim Nickum. I'm a rural Delaware County resident, 9335 North County Road, 500 West Muncy. I have been asked to be a part of the steering committee to guide our county forward in regards to the implementation of solar energy. regards to the implementation of solar energy. And I have come to ask you basically, one request. I am confident that there will be no shortage of emotions available at this council, the steering committee. But I, for one, would be very appreciative if we could actually have something other than emotions to discuss, something, you know, more substantial. I have done a lot of research online concerning economic impact development studies in regards to large-scale solar installations. They have been put together by out-of-state universities, or they have been put together by the solar developers themselves. I automatically read that with a grain of salt, and I have been able to actually take what I have read in several cases and try to put that in our particular situation here in Delaware County, and I find a lot of holes. I have not been able to find out if we have had that done in Delaware County, but I don't think that we have had. And I've read the Baker-Tiller report, which is very much a study showing the economic impact from the solar developers, solar developers standpoint. But I've not seen any, basically, the other side of the story from our economic, the economic ramifications from our agricultural suppliers and service providers. So I'm asking if the, if the council would commission and expedite an economic impact development study direct, you know, directly for our county, so that we could have that information as we try to, you know, chart the path, so to speak, for you to look at and, and write, you know, rewrite the ordinance that we have for Delaware County. The, the commission, I believe, is supposed to start up here, hopefully quickly, and so I wouldn't want the, the start of the meetings to be delayed while we are doing this study. We could go ahead and start without it, but I think before this process is over, it would simply give us some more relevant information to be able to discuss and consider. So, please take that under consideration and see what you could do. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I think, Tim, I think you would need to probably go through either the commissioners or the planning commission to be able to, to get the study that you're looking for.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we, we didn't do or participate, the, the Baker-Tiller report was brought to us from economic development, so my guess is, they would either, either commission that study or not commission that study, and, and maybe that could be a request of your, of your, of your study group if, if they aren't able to. I'm assuming that you said that you are on the, is it, how, how many member panel? Not, is it nine?
My understanding is we're going for nine members.
Okay.
I don't think all nine positions have been filled yet.
Okay.
But some of them have. So, so it would be better to go to the commissioners and request that, you think, through the, through the panel?
Well, I think you...
I, I assume since this was a fiscal body, perhaps that's where it should originate.
Yeah, I think, I think you would be asking through the commissioners.
That would be my first.
Yeah, yeah. To see if they, if you're wanting to get one prior to the group meeting, then I think you'd probably start there. I don't know, you know, I don't know what their feeling is, and I, I don't think you'd have to go to a public meeting to make that request, you could probably make that through the president, who currently is Sherri, Sherri Riggan.
Yeah. I, I thought that through, and it would seem like to me that, you know, there's, there's gonna be money involved, and that's why I thought if I went to the commissioners first, they would more than likely just say, come over here. So, and I know we have an economic development company under contract.
Uh-huh.
Through Brad, and so I didn't know if, if that would be the means to go about doing that. I think probably half the information is already compiled.
Yeah, and I, and I think the commissioners could make that request if they felt like that was the proper avenue, is to have the economic development group either commission the study or, or, or try and go that route. But I would, I would go that direction. If you don't have any luck with that, feel free to reach out, and, and we'll see if we can't get you in, in the right direction. Or, you know, once the committee is formed and the committee meets, it's possible that the committee can make that recommendation through the planning commission or the commissioners.
I have a question, Mr. Nickum. You had stated that you had been asked to join the steering committee, nine-person committee. For the sake of transparency and information, I know there's a lot of people in the community who, who may not be aware of that, could you state how that came about? Is, did someone reach out to you? Did you apply somewhere? How, how did you get involved with that?
Uh, well, um, the, the solar ordinance, which was written for Delaware County, has been sometime in the development stage. Due to a lot of reasons, the general public really was not aware that anything like this was going on. And it was roughly the end of last year, the first of this year, when the general public became aware that several large-scale solar installations entailing thousands of acres was basically almost ready to be approved and built. And once the public really became aware of just exactly the size and the scale of these solar farms that were, according to our solar ordinance in Delaware County, were going to be legal, the public opposition was awakened. A lot of folks came to the meetings here, commissioners' meetings, planning commission meetings. There was some, in addition to the public feeling that they had been left out of the dark in the whole planning stages by various solar developers and landowners, we also felt that perhaps Delaware County government, while meeting the minimum standards of notifications, those minimum standards of notifications didn't actually get to a lot of us, and I'm talking about legal notices in the newspaper and things, so a lot of us just simply weren't aware of, of what had transpired. So I think when, when the commissioners and, and your body became aware that this had all happened, and there was some discrepancy with the Baker-Tiller report in how it was presented to the council, some misunderstanding about exactly what those numbers meant, then it became pretty obvious that we needed to back up, try to perhaps not start from the beginning, but try to start over again to where we could put together a committee that would be willing to try to find a way forward, taking into account all sides of this issue. And so Marta Moody was tasked with putting together this committee, and she asked me.
So Marta's doing part of the selection committee?
Marta, Marta is the selection committee.
Okay.
Period, as far as I know. She, Marta...
Just reached out to you, you didn't apply for that, for consideration?
I had, I had indicated that if she thought I would be beneficial, that I would be willing, and so I did receive an email from her about two weeks ago, asking me if I would still do that, and I said yes.
So if I was someone in the public who was just as passionate about this as you, and I wanted to be involved, I would reach out to Marta?
Yes, I think that would be exactly the way to go about it.
Yeah, the commissioners have given Marta the approval to create the committee, through her.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Harold King.
Harold King, have farm out at Gaston area. Again, Tom Richards and I met with Marta yesterday to talk about, it's, it's not a problem to find fifty people for and fifty people against, I mean, it's pretty easily done. But our concern is hard finding three neutral people, as you can well imagine, and so she is desperately trying to do that, you know, our comment to her is she needs to be the chairperson, and so I think it will happen that way. But I'm here also to give you a real positive.